Item seven is overview of current issues related to policing or to policy operations and the budget at the South Burlington Police Department, and we welcome our wonderful Chief of Police Sean Burke.
Good evening, everybody.
Thank you for joining us, and certainly we extend our condolences on the loss of your mother-in-law and understand why you couldn't come last time, so.
I appreciate it very much, and I think Paul Connor is going to allow me to share my screen here. So I threw together a few slides to kind of help narrate this conversation because obviously that is a big agenda item, there's a lot to cover. We've got a lot that we're proud of in terms of where we brought the organization over the last couple of years, and hopefully I'm going to be able to illustrate this. Perhaps if Paul Connor is still listening. There it is.
You should be all set now, Sean.
Thank you. Sorry, will I reorient this? Hopefully this works.
You may have to change your display settings here to mirror your screens instead of extending them. In the top of the screen there where it says "display settings," try duplicate slideshow.
Is that better?
Yes. You've got a note at the bottom that you can just close out about fix apps that are blurry and cancel that.
Thank you for the IT help.
We all need it.
Yeah, you know, I didn't think I was going to be this fluent in go-to-meeting, but here we are in a pandemic. So what I did, I threw together some slides here that are tied to the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing, and the first tenant that was illustrated in that report is building trust and legitimacy, and I feel that we've done that over almost, I've been here two years now, and we have committed to becoming a much more transparent organization, very proud of the complement complaint portal that we've established on the website. This is in concert with a citizen's ability to call in and give us feedback on any of our responses or show up here in person, we're happy to take those, but the online portal affords a citizen an anonymous way to give us that feedback. We don't have a lot of complaints that come into the police department, there's been about 12 actually over the last three years, but I feel that this is a contemporary way in which to facilitate that. We've also stood up a system where we weekly are distributing our media and arrest logs to our media listserv, and that's been well-received and as you see, published, and in the other paper, we do things a little bit different with the other paper now, they requested a one-on-one weekly to kind of fill out a more fulsome media log, so we're doing that process now with them and have been doing so for the last few months. Public records responses, something that was shocking to me and I'm certain that you'll share, we do about 450 a year public records requests that our staff respond to, always within the timelines of the Public Records Act. And lastly, finally, after really a couple decades of the organization having cruiser cameras installed and in use in the field, this year we put in place a cruiser camera policy that mandates the use and also the wear of body microphones by officers while they're on duty. More in this vein of building trust and legitimacy, our commitment to domestic violence, in 2018, we did a full review and rewrite of our policy, which is really heavily centered on empowering survivors in digging in on every single incident into the dynamics of relationship. We use the lethality screening assessment and do so quite effectively. This tool is about six questions in length, and any question that is answered in the affirmative triggers a phone console with an advocate, and we've actually been recognized by our local advocates of our police department, standing above the rest of our partner agencies and our ability to not only use the screening tool but connect survivors with resources. And then finally, but definitely not insignificantly, we had our community forum where it was a partnership between City Council, as you well know, and our Community Justice Center, and we had a really great community forum to bring awareness to, you know, the prevalence of domestic violence in our community, and not only to bring awareness to it but also kind of orient those that maybe are quietly suffering to resources that are beyond the police department, you know, our advocate community and other non-governmental entities that can support those survivors. So that's work that we're certainly proud of, and then also fair and impartial policing. In 2018, we did not have the legislative policy in place at that time, we had one that basically met all the metrics in the state mandated policy, but we went ahead and did a rewrite and got that fully compliant with the terms of the legislation. We trained on it, and not only did we train on the policy but also on data collection and really just doing a better job of more accurate data that's been reported out to the state at the end of the year for analysis. And more recently, related to FIP, we started kind of an educational campaign on race and injustice issues involving the criminal justice system, and I think as I've reported before, we had a screening here for our staff on the Documentary XIII, which was followed up with a discussion with a representative from the State Fair and Impartial Policing Group that I'll talk about that program a little bit more in a subsequent slide. And then lastly, is our firm commitment, one that I inherited, and that's really our relationship-based policing that's done in this city, and it's a commitment that our staff has to quality of life and public safety within the city, and also really embracing policing with our citizens' consent, always looking for opportunities to empower those that have been victimized by crime or other circumstances in their lives and leaving folks with their dignity. The second pillar of the President's Task Force Report involved policy and oversight. In 2018, when I came on board, the policy manual hadn't really been updated since 2009, the last time the organization was accredited, and just over that time, some things had slipped away. Kind of in ascending order here, we did a Narcan policy, I think that was critical, Narcan was in use by the police department, but it's through this kind of community saturation in Narcan, have we seen better results as it relates to those suffering from substance use disorder and, you know, the crisis of overdose. Again, we did the fair and impartial policing policy along with the domestic violence policy. Those were frontburner issues that were identified, and then in 2019, we began to look at some of our high liability areas. Vehicle operation is one, not only when we're responding to emergencies, but police officers drive a lot, and you have to have a good policy around that. Public information because of our engagement with the media, we wanted a contemporary policy there, and then another one that I'm quite proud of is we have a standalone general order response to persons in crisis. This is, you know, a crisis that every police department is thrust into, that we're not always best tooled for, we're definitely learning a lot and spinning up our operations in that regard, but this is a good resource for our team. And then lastly, and probably most importantly, in 2019, we published a new use of force policy. This is a very, very progressive policy, it's centered on the principles of de-escalation, it actually offers a definition of de-escalation, which many police departments did not have in their policy yet. It's also centered largely on the sanctity of human life in a decision-making model that is proportional in our response to situations that our officers are thrust into. And then as this latest crisis in policing came upon us, we learned that even, I'm sorry, that we had met seven of the eight metrics that the Project Zero had determined were absolutely crucial in police use of force policies. The one that we were missing was the duty to intervene and duty to report, and we went ahead soon after the murder of George Floyd and issued a special order, an addendum to this policy, so our policy is fully in compliance with the eight that can't wait. And also, in 2020, we issued a general order that outlines our response to hate crimes and bias incidents, and it was important that officers had a resource that would walk them through exactly what to do in terms of responding to and investigating a hate crime or a bias incident, and then the subsequent notifications that need to be made, not only within the organization but to the Attorney General's Office, Civil Division, and our own state attorney. The third pillar of the Task Force Report focused on technology and social media. Things that we are working on today, we have subscribed to a new software solution, Power DMS. This is going to be a platform that manages our policy, right now we're doing it through PDF copies on a shared drive. Power DMS actually offers a way to publish the documents in which they are archived, that also offers a tracking and accountability piece when it's delivered out to staff. You can actually go in and set various parameters, so you know, an employee just can't simply click through a policy and then sign off on it, they have to spend a requisite amount of time on each page, and again, it includes the digital signature, and then it archives all that data, which is really, really important when we find ourselves in litigation or trying to determine if our staff has been compliant with their policy review. It's good now because we've done about 31 policies since I've been here, we've got about 70 more to go, but this will then actually take all of our policies and they'll be in a functional body that we not only manage here internally but the software licenses our city attorney to have access to those records as well. Now we are using much more data and evidence-based principles when we're talking about either solving crime, we're looking about ways to deploy our resources. And in kind of a primitive way, we're using technology for an accountability platform in the sense that each of our shifts, there's three per day, there's a shift report that is published electronically across the supervisory staff, where you have real-time information about what's going on operationally in the city, and any concerns that we might have with either equipment, facilities, or staff, and again, it just heightens the awareness of what the organization is up to, and it actually disciplines the supervisors to know exactly what's going on on their watch, and gives them great responsibility for it, and that's been a great program. I think in the future, as it pertains to technology, we're definitely going to have to have a conversation about body worn cameras, this police department does not have a body worn camera program, they are very, very expensive, I will have the numbers proposed in the capital planning coming up this year, it's not going to be insignificant, but it's also a place where, you know, we're not there yet from a legislative mandate, but I think from a community expectation perspective that we probably are, and I think there's other software solutions that we're going to have to examine. I know that the Department of Public Safety currently is talking a lot about perhaps hosting a statewide use of force reporting and in data management platform that we would all subscribe to. I know that our system here that I'm going to talk about in a little bit was once like a, literally a pen and paper and then put in a filing cabinet that does us very, very little when we're looking to identify trends that we need to improve training, trends with a certain officer, or using ineffective force, a whole host of things, so I think that that is going to be potentially something on the horizon for the organization to look at. And then social media, we use three platforms of social media, Facebook and Instagram are excellent platforms to socialize the police department with the community, we get obviously rave reviews from our guests here tonight, K9 Rush, and we've also gotten a lot of accolades for our recent endeavor to publish more about our employees celebrating their anniversaries year to year here with the organization, and then we use Twitter for really sharing with the media or subscribers out there about things that are going on currently, streets that are closed, incidents that are ongoing, to kind of answer those questions. It does two things, one, it lets the public know what we're up to, and two, it tends to alleviate some calls out of curiosity in our dispatch center from other media sources about, say, why is Williston Road closed right now? So those things have been going very well. One thing that we won't do on social media, there's no reason to do the kind of the warrant roundup or mass publication of mugshots, particularly with the environment now in court where many, many criminal charges are being expunged and/or sealed, if we were to put mugshots out on a regular basis, there's no way that we could ever walk that back, so we looked at that practice probably got almost 20 months ago and discontinued that particular The fourth pillar involves community policing and crime reduction. Your community policing is a term that people like to throw around, and community policing is usually associated largely with the programmatic side, and what we have here for community police programs, we have our youth service division and a curriculum that they teach there that I'm certain many of you are familiar with. They also do things like the CSI camp in the summer and other educational opportunities. We have our ice pop with a cop events historically before the pandemic at So Bud Night Out, had some great coffee with a cop events both at Starbucks and Dunkin' Donuts, the holiday shopping with cops with area students at the Target, our engagement with Meals on Wheels, again, officers from our youth service division deliver meals on wheels at least once a month. Special Olympics, we have Corporal Bree Williamson who really has taken this to a really nice plateau with a strong emotional engagement, a lot of energy going into her work with Special Olympics, and then lastly, Project Good Morning, which is a project that has existed here for a long time, where folks, generally seniors that live alone, they're on a list, they call in each morning to let us know that they're okay, if we don't hear from them, dispatch will reach out to them via phone, if we can't raise them on the phone, we'll go ahead and send an officer over just to make sure that they're doing okay. So that's kind of the programmatic side, I think that the other side of what people mean when they're talking about community policing, again, is the relationship-based policing, and something that I inherited and with this organization and am a strong advocate for is problem-solving with citizens through partnerships, empowering your communication, but really it's the act of listening to folks on the communication side and then leveraging the right resources for people. I think examples of when we do this work is when we identify someone or some situation that's in need of our partner agency at Howard with community outreach, or some of the work that we've done in the housing models here in town at CHT in Beacon, those can be some really challenging dynamics, but it's really about getting the right resource to the root of the problem to try to, you know, bring back order to whatever the housing arrangement might be. And then most recently, our program at the Holiday Inn, that has not been an easy lift for the police department, but our staff is really proud of the work that they're able to do because if those folks during this pandemic were displaced and living here, there, and everywhere, who knows what the outcome would be for them, and that's really, really valuable work, but it's hard work, and it's not work that we're always completely tooled for, and what I've learned from this program at the Holiday Inn is, you know, this is a heavily resourced program, and there's still a lot of behavior that slips through the cracks that isn't quite addressed by the mental health counseling, isn't quite criminal, but isn't really within the societal norms of living in a hotel alongside Williston Road, but all in all, I think that's been very successful. What I wanted to add to this was a little bit about our incident data here in the city, I think to provide, you know, the right context here, you have to know kind of what we're up to. Before I start walking through this, I want you to know so you don't have an early question here that I've broken our data into essentially four silos. The first will be just general service, the stuff that we're doing day-to-day, kind of the bread and butter of policing. The second silo will be criminality, those trends in the city. The third will be unmet social needs, and then the last will be a little overview on traffic. So just by way of teeing this up, you know, our calls for service generally range from 14,000 to 15,000 per year, we also file 850 criminal charges with district court a year. Now, that doesn't mean that 850 people are arrested, many people are charged with multiple counts, so that's not an arrest number, and then above that, I just want folks to know that we also arrest about 100 people a year on outstanding court-ordered warrants, which is kind of just an interesting metric when you're looking at things that we're arresting folks for, I mean, it's a non-discretionary arrest, and it's also a data point that I want to learn more about when we're kind of forced to arrest people. Day-of-week prevalence on our calls is Monday through Friday from about 11:00 in the morning until 11:00 at night, which is directly in line with kind of what we know about the community, that the service population is far greater than the residential population, and those demands definitely show up in our call data. When we talk about the service work that we do, these numbers here were taken from our records management system from July 1, 2019 to August 1 of this year, and we've responded to 734 alarms, we've responded to 616 public assists and 338 911 hangups, and then this year, I think we're trending a little bit up because it's been such a hot number, or it's such a hot year, 256 animal problems and taken 16 missing persons reports. So again, when you look at urban police departments' call data, you see a lot of service work, and it's not, it wasn't surprising to me at all that we're responding to that number of alarms or, you know, that number of assists to the public. You know, public assist can be a really messy bucket of call data, it could be anything from, you know, the street light in front of my house is out to my neighbor dumped lumber on my lawn, it's really hard to kind of distill what that's all about, where 911 hangups and animal problems and missing persons are very straightforward to understand, but each call type has kind of a different weighted amount of time that consumes the officers, and that is also another metric that I'd like to look at going forward. Criminality in the city boils down to retail theft, and so just to make this super clear, the chart on the left are July 2018 to present numbers, and then the chart on the right, July 16 to 2018, you'll see there's a slight decrease in the number of retail thefts between the two data sets, I firmly believe that's because of the pandemic and the fact that the malls closed. Domestics run anywhere from 130 to 150 a year. DUI, you'll see that we've had an increase in our DUI numbers from 57 up to 86, I attribute that to two things, one, we have some younger officers that are definitely doing a nice job in the proactive enforcement, and two, we're detecting a lot more drug driving now, and we actually have four drug recognition experts on staff here, and they're doing a nice job of making those cases. Assaults are virtually flat, and then lastly, something that I'm super proud of is our burglary rate, you'll see we had 41 in the 16 to 18 set, we're down to 16 in the more recent set, and I believe that that is definitively related to our detectives' work in actually looking at burglary patterns, marshaling the evidence across to those burglaries, and making better cases for prosecution, and quite frankly, there are more burglars in jail now than there were in 16 or 18, and in Chittenden County, when there's any number of about 10 to 12 guys on the street, all of our burglary rates go through the roof. The last thing I'd like to say about criminality here in the city is that if you'll notice across all these things that we're making criminal arrests for, the only one that is really a discretionary or a proactive enforcement measure is DUI, the rest of these situations we are called to. So in this city, there is really no neighborhood or venue that's in need of a crime suppression model, you know, there's not a block where there's open air, drug dealing, or public drinking that's leading to crime and disorder, again, it's more of a suburban setting, and we're responding to crime and not proacting on crime, and when you look at some of the things that are out in terms of reducing, you know, the footprint of the police on a community, a lot of that work, a lot of those ideas are focused on police departments that have to go out and engage in some form of crime suppression, and that's just not the model of policing that this city needs, nor is it one that we engage in.
Chief Burke, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
So you just mentioned how DUI is the one that we proactively seek out, earlier in the meeting, we were talking about how Mayor Weinberger announced today that they will be setting last call to be 10:00 PM in the city of Burlington. Do you have any thoughts on what South Burlington should consider related to that and how that might factor into DUIs, would maybe possibly people traveling further in the wee hours, so to speak, in order to get an alcoholic beverage, or any thoughts on the connections or what South Burlington should be considering related to last call?
Yeah, so I will say that we do apprehend a few DUI operators on Williston Road that leave the city of Burlington after the typical bar closing now, you know, it's tough to equate to nightlife situations. Downtown Burlington is really its own animal in the sense of what can be enjoyed there and why people go there. When I tuned in earlier, I heard the discussion, and I really couldn't think of a venue or club in town that kind of offers that same environment, nor do I see like the vast population of UVM students that I know who live in the Hill section, I don't see them traversing here absent some type of change in the nightlife, do I? It's really tough to say, I don't think, I don't think we would gain anything by having an earlier close date or an earlier close time, but again, that could change if we had a different club suddenly stand up in town after Burlington, something like that.
Okay.
Okay, so the third silo, I've entitled here, unmet social needs, this is police data, and you'll see across the bottom here, we've got four years of data, again, July to July. Intoxication, calls that we go to remain fairly flat around 150 a year, you can see the next category, mental health issue, you can see a strong trajectory upward, 2018 a little bit greater than 2019, you know, I think it's because the 2019 numbers that I actually have caught the first couple of months of the pandemic. Welfare check, again, this is when folks call us and say, hey, I was on Facebook Messenger with a friend or an ex, and they're not feeling well about themselves or circumstances, and they ask us to go out and check on folks. Again, we see a strong trajectory upward here from 2016 to just shy of 300, and now we're closely approaching 450 over 18 and 19. Again, with our numbers with suicide and attempted suicides, you know, one per week is a lot, and seems to be where we're at, and I don't see a downward trajectory. Then overdose, we see fairly flat numbers, have a little bit of outlier here in 2018, and again, just to go back to Narcan, I think now that Narcan is more readily available to folks, that we see fewer reported overdoses, and also I think that our partners over at the clinic at Howard have made access to treatment, you know, much easier in concert with, say, the low barrier buprenorphine program and sobriety coaching available at the emergency department of Fletcher Allen. But we're not in this work alone, of course, we have our partners over at the community outreach team, and I had available their quarter four data from this fiscal year, which is April through the end of June. In South Burlington, the team provides 72 face-to-face services that amounts to 24% of the team's contacts for the quarter, and we as a city are responsible for 22% of the team's funding. This has been a really, really successful program for the police department and the citizens that we serve, I couldn't imagine trying to do this job without this kind of resource, and in terms of what other communities are wrestling with, with the defund movement, I think that in 2018, when the city manager identified this critical need and needed a source of funding for this- when the city manager identified this critical need and needed a source of funding for this, police funds were used. And now this lives as a line item in our in our police budget. And I think that's a model that other communities that, you know, some are embracing, but other communities should consider as they're thinking about ways to use resources to better serve particularly those that are in crisis. The next thing I wanted to talk about is traffic enforcement. Traffic enforcement is meaningful for a lot of reasons. You know, we talked about DUI, but also we get a lot of complaints from the public about motor vehicles. What I have here, though, is a very interesting graphic. Blue line represents our data from two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen. The brown line, if you will, is eighteen to current day. So in sixteen, the police department stopped, or I'm sorry, sixteen to eighteen, the police department stopped just shy of seven thousand cars. Our property damage crash rate was about one thousand one hundred and fifteen on that, in that same time period. Injury crashes were about eighty six and our motor vehicle complaints were just over a thousand. Conversely, in two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty, we only stopped about thirty six hundred cars. Our property damage crash rate, as you can see by this line, is virtually flat. There's a small increase, the number's like right around twelve hundred. Injury crashes are almost identical. I think it's an increase of maybe four or five. And motor vehicle complaints actually reduced across the city. Now, I know that motor vehicle enforcement is important to public safety and highway safety. But I do like to study these trends because there really hasn't been a correlation made that just kind of wildly stopping cars without a plan does anything to your crash rates. And I think we see that here in this graphic. Anyone have any questions about this one?
Well, plus your DUI went up, so it seems like it's just been more effective stops. I mean, there might be other things that came out of it as well, but.
Certainly, I mean, it's an excellent observation. And I will tell you that, you know, it's hard even to make the argument that enforcing traffic laws on public highways will impact like the, just the sheer number of parking lot crashes that we take in the city as well. So, you know, there's a couple of different lenses, but certainly our DUI enforcement has been robust. It would be interesting to kind of equate what DUI crash numbers look like. We don't have a lot of DUI related crashes in the city, but that would be a metric that I want to look at going forward. You cannot look at a traffic stop without looking at the race data associated with it. So what you'll see here, this is the two thousand nineteen traffic stop data from the organization. The blue line represents the white population. The orange line is black population, green Hispanic, and yellow is Asian, which you'll see here, a number of stops are illustrated clearly. But in a predominantly white city in society, we're stopping a lot more white folks. You'll see that that plummets right down here to meet a similar arrest number that is shared across all races. We ticket white operators as slightly higher percentile than the remainder, but that has more to do with sheer numbers. You can see that the ticket rate is just about consistent here amongst other races. And then similar with warnings, just because of the sheer number, it kind of skews this line of the number of white operators warrant. You can see that down here on this line, I will remark that the the sheer number of black operators is slightly greater than these other two categories. So that magnifies a little bit. And then as we get down to our search rate, you can see that the graph comes back essentially flat against all races and the number of searches that we do. And then our effectiveness in those searches, meaning the our hit rate, is very, very consistent. Data projects that I'd like to look at in the next fiscal year. I mentioned this before, our use of force system was one that was fairly old and involved a seven page. It sometimes was handwritten, other times it could be typed and submitted then for approval. But the paper copies, the hard copies, they did not capture things like race of the person, reason, I'm sorry, not reason, but a lot of the different circumstances around the use of force. So we went ahead this year and actually published a new use of force reporting document for use. It's not a great system because we built it in house. It's a very, very fulsome nine page report that can be completed and submitted electronically, although we've had some hiccups because we're running it through, you know, a PDF process. But at least we have behind that a spreadsheet that we're populating that accounts for all of our use of force to include demographics of the arrested person, demographics of the officer, time of day, day a week, reason, whether it's in defense of another, in defense of self, the exact force that was employed, whether or not there's injury, and so on and so forth. What that's allowed us to do is actually amass a data set, not only for the new report, but an officer that is on administrative duty here took all of our use of force reports from two thousand thirteen through two thousand nineteen and populated the data into the spreadsheet. And by generosity of Paul Connor and Justin Rabidu, I'm talking with them about how we can potentially, you know, visualize and do some analysis on our use of force trends over the, over those periods of years. Because I think it's important to understand, you know, how we're using force, when we're using force, why we're using force and who we're using force against. You know, if we cannot get a statewide solution for a use of force reporting database or particularly a database that then can aggregate and visualize data, I would want to look to invest in one here for the for the organization. A similar product that I have, that same officer who's on administrative duty working on is looking at our arrest demographics for the last couple of years. And what I'd like to know about is by race, by gender, who we're arresting and why we're arresting. And I think why is very, very important when you look at the number of folks that we're arresting. They're not discretionary arrests. If you have court ordered conditions that you violated or if you have an arrest warrant, there's nothing that the police can do about that. But we can learn about things where we have some discretion and maybe look for more effective means to channel those cases. And then lastly, I'm interested in knowing more about effective ways to deliver officer training on a variety of topics and also a way to have an early intervention system for officers. This is a very, very stressful job. And I think all too often we see, over time, when we see an officer that maybe has gotten him or herself into trouble, where we then learned, oh, well, they've been calling out sick more often than not. They've had a couple of use of force that's atypical of them. And they've also been to three untimely deaths in this last quarter. I think maybe if we knew that beforehand, we might be able to better serve our officers and you give them some resources that they might need to deal with the stressors that they're feeling.
Chief Burke, can I just ask you a question in terms of the use of force? Does that include or does do the, I don't know, set of rules and so forth you've adopted include the duty to intervene? Where are you with that? Or is that something that you will be commenting upon?
Yes, so when we published the new use of force policy in two thousand nineteen, that was the one element that we did not have in our policy. But we did add it as a special order, as an addendum here in June, where there is a duty to report, duty to intervene. And the duty to report addresses, you know, say you're an officer that's put in an unfortunate situation and your supervisor is the person that you see using inappropriate force. It allows that officer to go outside that chain of command and report it above that employee. So then the command function of the police department can deal with that behavior. So we did add that in June of two thousand twenty.
Great, thank you.
The fifth pillar of the task force report focused on training and education. Some of the things that we've done two thousand eighteen to present, we subscribe to the Police Executive Research Forum, specifically the Integrated Communication Assessments and Tactics Program. We have five certified instructors in this program. And what this is, it's not a use of force protocol or training curriculum. It's a scenario based training curriculum that we use that incorporates everything from communication, active listening, to decision making model where maybe you're leveraging a resource like community outreach. Maybe you have to reach in that decision making model and use force. But it's all highly, highly centered on the sanctity of human life, de escalation and harm reduction. We've trained not only our full staff in the curriculum early on, I think early on in two thousand nineteen, but we use the same curriculum in our ongoing training, scenario based training here at the police department. And our team of instructors actually recently taught this curriculum for the St. Albans Police Department, who are trying to make some advancements in this vein. Another training curriculum that we that we launched here, God, I think this is over a year ago now, we had an autism awareness training, which was really good for our officers to get an overview on autism from a behavioral perspective, to understand why folks might be reacting in certain ways to the police and get some communication strategies around that. And again, just a level of awareness so officers could be better prepared and accurately assess situations that involve autism. We do have a few calls like this a year involving autistic children in the community. We wanted to make sure that we could serve those families, you know, very, very effectively and not be in a situation where an officer overreacts because they didn't have this level of awareness training. And then more recently, as it relates to systemic racism and injustice, we had two screenings here at the police department of the thirteenth. Very, very interesting documentary. This piece of American history should definitely be rolled into a curriculum at the Vermont Police Academy. Quite frankly, until I learned about this documentary about a year or so ago and watched it, there were things in there about policing, about the history of policing in this country related to race and racism that I was unaware of and embarrassingly so. And after we watched the documentary as a group, we had a facilitated discussion with Dr. Etan, Messer Redden Longo, and Captain Gary Scott of the Vermont State Police, who heads up the fair and impartial policing efforts there. And staff really, really enjoyed this presentation. And my assessment of that was that this is actually an education, much like when I attended Dr. Mark's seminar in two thousand eighteen on implicit bias. That was a one on one lecture on implicit bias where other training modules that have been offered to the police have been adversarial and lacked this context. And it almost makes cops feel like they're villainized, but they don't understand, they don't have the right context, the history to understand what a problem this is in society. And I believe that this is an area that our profession really needs to invest in, in educating our team members to the history of systemic racism, the role of the criminal justice system in our history. So when we have these boiling points in society that we understand what the problem is and we can, you know, carefully and thoughtfully listen and react and adapt to the needs of our community. So I think this was really good. You know, I will say that we do have mandated, legislated mandated training related to fair and impartial policing. But generally, it mandates that you review your policy, that we learn more about data collection, both, both super important. But again, lacking the historical context and the education that officers deserve to best understand this critical issue. And officer wellness and safety is the sixth pillar. And we continue a vendor relationship with Injury Health and Management Solutions at Colchester. They help us with our ergonomics, everything from how officers have to wear their gear now because we're all different size and shape and different age, right down to like our patrol cars and how the equipment is set up and if the seats are getting too smashed and when to replace those. It's very, very helpful to keeping our staff healthy and free of soft tissue injuries. We also have a contract with Sonny Perbeto, who is our department clinician. He has a wellness center that's located in Colchester and offers a whole host of resources to first responders from E M D R, yoga and counseling services. We found our relationship with him to be very, very beneficial in helping our staff kind of deal with accumulative stress issues that are associated with being a cop. We also have our in house peer officer support team, which we've stood up, retrained and invested more in terms of members for accessibility to our staff. And really, the critical metric here with a peer officer support team is it helps in reducing stigma for asking for help for years and years and years. If you were to ask for help because you couldn't process a death scene or something that, you know, a fatal accident, something that you saw, that was often seen as a weakness. Now, those are opportunities to make our staff more resilient and our peer officers support team is very connected here on that level, on the peer level, and supporting one another. We also have the New City Resource, the Marathon Health Center for overall wellness. And we are still dealing with COVID nineteen harm reduction and mitigation. This was a very steep and slippery hill that we began to ascend March thirteenth of this year. And we had to learn a lot about P P E and ways to keep our staff safe so we could continue to serve the community. And then more in the vein of officer safety, we're going to further invest in some scenario based training moving forward. And really, this is harm reduction for officers and citizens. There's a great opportunity over at Vermont International Guard Base. They have a simulator where we can run employees through live scenarios on the simulator. And depending on how the officer interacts with the situation on the screen, the person operating the software can change the outcome of the situation. It's very, very, you get immediate feedback. And because of its location, it's a resource that we can use on a regular basis. We have two officers that are going to be trained as instructors to operate that system. We're going to continue with our Police Executive Research Forum, I C A P curriculum. Again, again, it's all about decision making models, slowing incidents down and bringing the appropriate resources to bear. And within that is incorporating the right entities into the process. And whether that's using community outreach and first call as live resources during scenario based training or using community outreach specialists as role players in these scenarios, which is very, very effective because of what they see in their body of work. Or using, you know, and again, in terms of scenario based training, leveraging things like sobriety coaching or going to the E D. If you're a person suffering with substance abuse disorder and you need low barrier buprenorphine or a sobriety coach to get you into treatment. This is kind of the structure of the organization today. As you can see, there's thirty eight sworn officers at the police department. So that's everything from me, who doesn't do a lot of policing anymore, to the two officers that were pictured with Kevin and I in an earlier slide that are slated to go to the Vermont Police Academy here August thirty first. The backbone of our organization is clearly the patrol section, this middle silo under the patrol lieutenant, which is abbreviated L T, along with our dispatch team, which amounts to six folks. That's really the spine of any police department. And then we have obviously our detective resources that do everything from pre employment backgrounds to major felony investigations. We also have one detective assigned to the Chittenden Unit for Special Investigations, which is essentially a sex crimes unit and one assigned to the Vermont Task Force. Our traffic safety officer is currently vacant. And then we have our youth service division, which actually has just two officers assigned to it now and have to schedule a conversation with the district to see what their needs are going to be of us this year. Of course, with the hybrid model and probably some shortened school days. I don't know how much of our curriculum we're actually going to be able to deliver. And that was kind of what I had teed up for this presentation.
That's great.
Any questions that you may have?
Okay, that was great, very, very impressive. Are there, I have, there are two comments and questions from the public that I'll share with you, but I'll first let the council weigh in. Are there comments or questions that you might have? Megan and then Tom?
Yeah, thank you, Chief Burke. I thought that was a really informative presentation. And I think that we could probably. I thought that was a really informative presentation and um, I, I think that we could probably spend a lot more time than we have slated tonight and I hope that we can spend more time on it. Um, but I thought that you're, you really did a nice job outlining um, the, the various pillars, as you call them, but also kind of giving us the, filling it in so that we can get a sense of, of, you know, what your role is in our community and the various ways that you, that you serve us. The question I had um, had to do with use of force and you didn't have any data with regard to that. So I know that you've been uh, incorporating um, new uh, topics into, to the policy documents that you have. And if you could talk more about the sanctity of life perhaps, but also the um, the uh, you know, the use of force of our department. And specifically, I, I am interested to know about whether or not it is always required for officers to carry a weapon with them. And I mean specifically a firearm with them. I, I, you know, a bobby stick or other things, I, I, I don't intend to imply that.
Yeah, certainly. So uh, as it pertains to use of force, that's a, a data set that we're amassing now. We've got a, a lot of data in sheets, but I haven't been able to do any analysis because I'm just not an economist and I can't visualize that yet. Um, but those, that's an area that uh, we need to get to and we need to get to this year and hopefully um, using existing city resources we can. Um, in terms of having to use force, you know, the police department over that, those years thirteen through present day, there are about uh, eighty instant, instances a year where police officers used force. Now oftentimes that is uh, like two officers having to subdue someone or something like that. So the, the raw incident count may be only forty or fifty, um, but each officer that uses force, which is the, which is defined as anything above compliant handcuffing has to do a use of force report. So um, you know, let's use for an example, uh, the officers stop a stolen car and uh, when they do so, uh, policy and training dictate that that car is stopped in a manner in which uh, officers cover the car with their firearm. Now ninety-nine percent of those instances are quickly resolved uh, without resistance, but because a firearm has been displayed, a report has been filed. Um, so that just puts in the context about, you know, luggage reported for force. Now in terms of do officers need to carry firearms, they absolutely have to. Um, the gun culture in our society is one that we cannot ignore. Uh, the, the instances where our officers are called to defend others are uh, very, very critical. I would say that, you know, could we do more in terms of training? Yes, but that there are fiscal responsibilities there. Um, and have I seen an alarming trend in how officers um, use or display their firearms? I have not. Um, you know, but the gun culture in this, in this country is very, very strong. Um, this can be very, very dangerous work and without any predictability. And to put cops on the street that were not armed with firearms in America is just not a principle that I could ever wrap my head around.
But things like for meals on wheels or, or when you do those kinds of service activities, do you have to enter into a situation with a firearm?
The problem is, is that we never know what might happen. So, you know, like I could go out and deliver meals on wheels and uh, suddenly we have a carjacking like we did over by the airport where we all have to respond right away. So when we're on the street, we have to be fully equipped, wearing uh, you know, our ballistic vests and having all of our equipment to include our radios so we're able to respond and help citizens.
Okay, I, I do have a second question, Helen, if that's all right, yeah.
No, but let, you know, let's try to, we're, yes, keep going. You're, you're right, we could have spent a lot more time on this.
It's the last one, the, the intervention and reporting, is, is that something that, I know you, you just added it to the policy document, but is there a culture in our, in our, you know, force where officers feel comfortable reporting on their supervisors?
I, I don't think any officer would feel comfortable, but I feel that their duty would call them to do so. Um, you know, at the end of the day, officers um, have their, their credibility and understand their duty and uh, that is really, really ingrained in our culture here. And to say that they'd be comfortable in doing so, I, I don't think they would be comfortable. Would they feel their duty and do the right thing? I do. And I feel that uh, our oath that has been on the books long before I was a South Burlington cop, really kind of drove that home on what the expectation was, but it wasn't time to rely on layers upon layers away from our use of force policy and having, and relying on our oath. It was time, given what was going on in our country, just to go ahead and put it in a new updated policy to make it explicitly clear what the expectation was um, of our staff.
Are there incentives to uh, encourage officers to, you know, stay true to that duty?
If you value your employment, yes.
That was clear, thank you.
Thank you, Tom?
Really quick, you mentioned data projects for the coming year. Could you, I, I hope you didn't speak to this and I missed it, but uh, how could you, could you describe how it easy it is or how much consistency or if this is an obstacle when it comes to regional reporting so we get greater consistency across our town boundaries and across the state for looking at data because South Burlington is not an island?
Yeah, certainly, uh, you know, I spoke to it as it pertains to use of force. I'm really hopeful that Department of Public Safety is going to host a service where we're all reporting our use of force to a software solution that is state-hosted and then uh, that the data can be aggregated and distilled from that point. I would love to do it uh, across a lot of broad categories in this state. You know, I think there's a huge opportunity when you think about Vermont, there's about nine hundred total police officers. Um, you know, three hundred and twenty-five are Vermont State Troopers, about a hundred are Burlington cops and then there's the rest of us. I think that we could combine uh, records management systems and software solutions for all these topics that are of public interest.
Okay, any other, Tom, Tim?
Yes, uh, good evening, Chief Burke, and thank you so much for the presentation. It, it really was um, elucidating and I, I really appreciate it. Just a couple of questions. One, um, can you describe the diversity of, of your, of your, of your workforce today and compare it to when you first started or when it was under Chief Whipple? Uh, and the second question is, how do you judge their receptivity by the uh, staff to some of the training that they receive such as viewing the film, the thirteenth and then having the, the, the discussion afterwards? And, and are you comfortable with that level of receptivity? And do you feel like um, you know, that the staff have learned something and have, have found some educational uh, quality to, to that training?
Yeah, great question and thank you. So let me address the second one first. Uh, our, our staff here is really, really bright, learned uh, officers from in the newest to uh, some of our most senior staff. And they um, you know, I, I don't want to mischaracterize this, but anytime that you've got like a twenty-year veteran coming out of a diversity training saying it wasn't bad, that's a ringing endorsement. Um, and uh, I think the discussion actually was most illuminating that folks had ideas, it did provoke thought. Uh, and again, they were able to sit there and receive uh, educational material that germinated their profession without being um, you know, indicted as, as being a racist themselves. Uh, other training modules have done that and that's been a barrier to cops kind of grasping the importance of this issue. And I feel that this, this educational track is, is the one to be on. So uh, I think it was very successful and we're going to try a couple of different things in the coming years to um, kind of build upon that. And then diversity of the force, uh, it's, it's virtually the same. Uh, we have eight female officers and uh, we have one uh, African-American male officer um, that's been with us about twenty years. Um, so the rest uh, of us, I don't think I've missed anyone, but I think the rest of us would identify as uh, as white men.
And, and one last question, Helen, is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
So Chief Burke, how do you feel about the morale of, of your, your staff now? Do, how would you characterize it? Do they, do, are they glad to be employed and glad to be working as police officers? Do they enjoy the work? Do they understand how, you know, de-escalation protects them as well as protects, you know, the person that they might have to use force on and things like that?
Yeah, certainly. I think uh, you know, are, there's no one walking these halls that want to go out on the street and hurt anyone, you know, there just isn't. Um, you know, so they do appreciate de-escalation, they really, really appreciate the existence of the community outreach team and the resources that they bring to bear. You know, I think there's a lot of questions on a personal level about what's going on in policing, what's going on the backside of the criminal justice system, why am I still doing this job? But you know, our cops enjoy such a strong level of community support that um, we're very, very thankful for that. So I see it in two ways that, you know, even if you're questioning like why you got into this business right now, when you see, you know, people not being held accountable in the court system, you see a crumbling mental health system that's not serving citizens that we're trying to help against like, at least I work for a city that, you know, supports me, supports my work, uh, and is trying to give me the best or, you know, the, the, yeah, the best and most resources available to help me do my job.
I just have to stress that, you know, being a police officer is a very complex thing because you have to be a social worker, an enforcer, an educator, and, and you have to wear a number of hats all throughout the day. And I, I just really respect that. It's, it's a, it's a difficult job. Um, I, I've, I've had some family members who, who um, you know, knew people that were, that were in the law enforcement and they have had some very serious difficult times. And I think that it sounds like with the amount of training that, that South Burlington police are getting, that they understand what their role is, you know, in our city and, and in our society. And, and I hope that just keeps improving and I hope it keeps improving in, in other towns and cities in, in Chittenden County as well and throughout the state. I mean, that's all of our responsibility is to try and put police out of their own job, right? I mean, I wish our society could attain that. It's a very difficult thing to try and do, but one of the things that's going to come on after this, you know, agenda item is another agenda item that has to do with housing. And, and that's kind of relevant, I think, here in terms of, you know, social problems. So I'll leave it at that, but thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. I have just, oh, go ahead, sorry.
It is, it is a tough job, but there's nothing more rewarding. Uh, and I just want to thank, you know, not only the city management team, but the council for your support. Uh, we have everything that we need. Uh, we're, we're doing uh, what I say is, is a great job and we're posturing in a way to respond to the community and this organization always has been. Um, this, this police organization has always been very, very attuned to what the community expectations are and meeting those. And that's, that's a place where other police organizations have drifted apart from your constituents and that creates a vacuum for a lot of questions about what your department's up to and if you're in fact trustworthy and legitimate in the eyes of the people that you're serving.
Well, thank you. And I have two quick um, sort of comment questions from the public. Um, one was the Bugby's attended the Vermont Suicide Prevention Symposium today and report that there's a new Hampshire program that brings families and loved ones together with first responders to the suicide to debrief and share what the impact has been for both. And their question is, does the South Burlington Police Department have post, I think they mean intervention, protocols or follow-up with officers and survivors?
We do, we do not have a, a protocol nor do we subscribe to any one uh, program or curriculum, but what we do uh, do is uh, it's, it's very intimate and it's what a family needs in terms of closure. And in instances of suicide, that can be really, really tough. Uh, but we work through those things and answer the questions uh, fully for the family, give them the resources um, that they need that we have within our reach and uh, be supportive and recognize them as uh, victims and survivors of those incidents.
Okay, thank you. And the second one, and it may be more appropriate um, to be shared with the school department, but this is from Donna Liban. And as the school year is about to begin, does the police department have concerns about the amount of traffic generated by private vehicle student drop-off at schools, particularly the high school and middle schools at an already congested traffic intersection at Dorset and Kennedy? Have they, in conjunction with school planners, considered working with locomotion and the bike ped committee to establish remote drop-off points to help relieve these congested intersections? You had that conversation with the school department or thought about it?
No, I, you know, I've been waiting um, to talk with the school district about a whole host of uh, issues now that the, the budget is passed and they know that uh, we're going to have a hybrid attendance model. I think we'll have a meeting to see what the, the needs are going to be of the police department in terms of uh, traffic flow on the campus. Uh, they do have their own security apparatus that could, that could examine that. Um, I would encourage them if they wanted to engage with locomotion, I think that's a great idea. I don't know if necessarily the police have a role in that one. And then from an engineering perspective, I don't know what that intersection is going to look like because regardless of what the school traffic does, there's simply less traffic right now, given uh, the pandemic, which has been frankly enjoyable.
Yes, okay. And then lastly, from Monica Osby, thank you, Chief Burke, exclamation point, slide five, training, thank you. So I think that says it all. There's no other questions. I really appreciate you um, updating us and I think um, as we go through the budget and really think about next year's budget with the police department, we'll have some more information and, and questions and as you will as well.
Excellent, well, happy to help and I'm glad you found the presentation fulsome and informative and thank you for your time.
We did, okay.